The pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its justness.
I would also ask for a moment of silent reflection, keeping the family of Renee Hill in your thoughts and prayers. She's a victim from Saturday's terrible sledding accident. Thank you very much. Agenda approval. I think Bill Gibb and I think had an addition for parks.
For recreation, yes.
Recreation, Greenway project.
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully we can do it when Mike Dashon gets his report. We'll do two things together.
Okay, and then I undermine the legal. It'll be the, well, like Ontario Preparers Group. I have something on. Al, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I believe we should probably add two more items, one being the rescission of the residency requirement motion that was made at our last meeting. I have a suggestion for the board which I could bring up at that time. And then secondly, I believe that the highway department has some excess equipment. Something has been approached to me with respect to potentially donating that to a local cemetery. I've done the research and gone around on that, and I think we could probably do it tonight. So we can just raise that as a single agenda item at this point.
Okay. Councilman Jacoby, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
Were we able to get a hold of that seal, Steve?
No, we were not.
Yeah, I made the phone call, but I just, not possible. Next time.
Yeah, Mrs. Nagard's right here, so she'll, I'm sure she'll understand.
All right. Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Councilman Morell, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. And Councilman Myers, anything to add?
Nothing.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Abstract, Councilman Jacoby.
Mr. Givens.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's right. Yep.
I move to approve the regular abstract of claims numbered 2,113 to 2,144 for 2,020, and number 17 to 228, 2,021, and recommended payment in the amount of $482,440.88 plus the post- audit of $99,810.99.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. The motion for the approval of the meeting minutes from 1/25/2021, the public hearing on the highway superintendent's salary and the regular town board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Department head's statements. We'll start with Chief Preve.
Just for the board's information, the committee has finalized a survey for the police department that is located on the department's Facebook page, I believe also on the town's website or Facebook page, as well as both schools. So feel free to look in and please fill out that survey for all the, especially for the town residents. Also for the open position, just so the board's aware, we have called for a list from civil service. We'll be getting that list. Got the list and sent it back to them. There'll be a physical fitness test for candidates on March 8th, and we'll get a final list after that, after the PP test.
Carol, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing. Deputy Supervisor Conrad, anything?
I'm all set.
All set. Dan Zano, anything?
No.
Dave Train?
A couple different things. One.
Do me a favor. Stand at the mic because they can't hear you on Zoom when, yeah.
Yeah, I have two, two different items. What about telephone poles down by River Park? I'd like to be able to dispose of them as I see fit.
Yeah. I talked to Al Bax today. He didn't see a problem with it, declaring of excess.
Right, exactly. And then just, within the motion, just authorize Mr. Train to dispose of them as he can. Sort of the same as, as, you know, brushing wood chips.
There's no value to them, and if I could find someone to take them, I'd.
How many are there?
Five there, or five and a half are there. One's broken off.
Okay.
I don't know whether we're going to get to the two at the top or just take the three and a half off the bottom.
Okay. We'll, we'll do up to five and a half. So I need a motion to declare five and a half telephone poles excess with zero value and authorize the highway superintendent to dispose them as easily as fit.
And just note, note that it's their used telephone.
Yes.
They're now used or abandoned. So right now, I'm still waiting for our company to get back to me, National Grid, to find out, you know, whether they want them or if I can just get rid of them, or if I can take them and cut them up and get rid of them.
Okay.
Or to own them, whatever. And then.
Hold on a second. So can I get somebody to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in, did you hear that, Bill and John?
Yes, very clear.
Okay, good. So we have a motion is second. Any questions on the matter?
The motion includes for him to dispose of them.
Right, right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And then I have two trucks that I'd like to claim as excess.
Well, let's do the one, and then we'll, well, we're going to do the one that he wants to sell on Auctions International. Go ahead.
Okay, so I have one 2006 dump truck, and I have the VIN number, and I'd like to donate it to a public entity, which is Riverdale.
He's going to handle that. We're going to do that under legal. And let's do the Auctions International one with you.
Okay, and the other one will be a 2003 Chevy truck, and this is all under the Parks Department.
Okay.
The Parks Department, with the service bed, and I have the VIN number, and I'll supply pictures to Donna, but I'd like to put that out to Auctions International. This is an equipment's access city.
So the motion would be to declare one 2003 Chevy, is it a pickup truck?
Yeah, it's a service truck.
Service truck as excess and authorize the highway department or the.
Parks, Parks Department.
To put it up for auction. To put it up for auction under Auctions International.
So moved. Second.
With motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And then you're going to have to take care of it under legal. Is that's, that's a parked truck to the 2006, and it says Ford dump?
Yeah, we can do it. Yeah, let's do it now.
If you wouldn't mind, I can just.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so what the question was is that, how to get rid of this truck, number one.
Hold one second. Can you hear Al? John and Nick and Bill, can you hear Al?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So the, the concept was is that if this was a valuable item, it would have to go to Auctions International so that we could get the best price for it, obviously. But there is a law which allows us to donate equipment, time, and money to not-for-profit cemeteries. And from what I understand, we've been approached by, it is.
Riverdale.
Riverdale. Thank you very much. Riverdale Cemetery. And they were looking for some assistance. And if, if the board recalls, we've been approached by many cemeteries in the past who have looked for support. Obviously, if these cemeteries go to pump, they become a burden to the town. And so it's, you know, it's mutually beneficial for the town to, where there are in-kind services and or equipment, to provide help where we can. Under the law, the town is able to donate certain equipment, money, and/or or other materials to the cemetery so long as they qualify as a public cemetery under the New York State not-for-profit corporation law. We've done the research, and this Riverdale Cemetery does qualify as such. And so the first motion would be to declare the 2000.
Six.
2006 service truck.
Ford dump truck.
Ford dump truck as excess. That would be the first motion. The second motion would be to, almost as a resolution, to acknowledge the fact that Riverdale Cemetery is a, a public cemetery within the scope of the New York State not-for-profit corporations law. And then third would be the motion to donate said excess truck to Riverdale. And the third motion, when you do that, just make sure that you put whatever value, have you assessed the value on it?
Trucks were $3,000.
A $3,000 trucks, just so that, okay, for accounting and tax purposes, everybody is covered, and it's in the resolution.
Okay, so what I need first is a resolution to declare a 2006 Ford dump truck excess.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And second, we need a motion to donate said Ford dump truck to Riverdale Cemetery.
Mr. Supervisor.
Identify Riverdale as a not-for-profit.
Yes. You know, identifying that Riverdale is a not-for-profit cemetery under the New York State not-for-profit law.
If you do that in the sec, that would be the second motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. So I need that motion?
Right here, okay.
Okay.
John did it. Seven. And just for discussion, I sat in on this session in New York last February, and Al's got it right, nailed down right to the, to the final point.
Yeah. Also, they've come to us before for help, and we weren't, we were not able to provide that help. They wanted, you know, they had a leaky roof at the mausoleum. They had some other issues up there that we weren't able to provide any help. This is a situation in a 1978 truck that is absolutely totally shot. It's worthless. And they, they reached out to us for help, and fortunately, we have a, a truck that we're able to provide them. So with that, we have a motion is second. If there's no more questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
And then the third motion, Mr. Supervisor, would simply be to donate the truck. And again, if you want to provide the VIN number for the record.
I have an idea. I believe the supervisor has a copy of the VIN number I have, and provided to.
Yeah. So I need a motion to, to donate the 2006 Ford dump truck. And I'll read the VIN number. VIN number is one, F as in Frank, D as in David, W as in William, F as in Frank, three six five, three six E as in Edward, A as in Adam, six five six eight six, to Riverdale Cemetery.
Make that motion.
We have a motion seconded by Councilman Givens. All in.
Al, give up the nail of the truck in that motion?
I think we identified the first one. That's all.
We're, we're okay. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, then keep contacting with that contact information form.
Yeah.
Riverdale and all.
Okay, yeah.
Perfect.
Tim Masters, Tim Masters, are you online?
He's muted.
Yeah.
There he goes.
Yes, I'm, I'm on.
Go ahead.
I sent everybody a email today, and some of you had hard copies. I wasn't sure who was all going to be at the meeting of the proposed fee schedule and municipal fee schedule. If you could all just look at it, digest it over the next couple of weeks, and then get back to me with any comments, and I would like to bring it up for a vote on the 20-second meeting.
I want to add to that that Tim, and now Ed, has worked a long time on these fees, and for a lot of them, they were scratching their heads on. Some that only applied to certain towns in our town, and it was kind of hard to come up with a fee for everything, but I think they did a really good job. So I appreciate that, Tim.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Tim?
No.
No. Okay. Thanks. Anything else, Tim?
Nope, that's all I had, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay. Bob Lainin?
Oh, yes, Mr. Supervisor. I've got a couple of updates for the board. Let's just start just with Kiwanis Park. We have, planning to have draft documents produced this week for review. We'll get those up to the town board and, and Mike Dashon, Al, for review and comment. Our target would be to, you know, distribute those, collect any comments, and then request authorization to advertise that project two weeks from this evening. So those should, will be, we'll have those no later than the end of this week for review and approval, but they should be pretty straightforward documents for the, for the Kiwanis Park. Would you like me to do the, the change order now or wait till, wait till under your agenda?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Next item would be, there is a change order number two to the Lewis and Waterline project. We did speak about this in some detail at the last meeting, and what this does is essentially memorializes the, the change in dates due to the contractor taking advantage of some of the, some of the good weather we had earlier this winter, where he worked an additional, I think it's 35 days, I think he did, beyond the original change order. And so we ended up just taking that off the completion date. So the revised completion date is now July 14th of this year. And again, that also maintains the overall construction duration of 340 days. So I would request the board authorize that change order. Unless there's any questions, of course, I'd be happy to answer any.
Over a promo as presented, second.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Do you have a question, Ron?
Yeah, and the money's on the second page, per contract amount. It's the same, and the revised contract amount. What does that actually mean, though? I'm confused on that.
There's a, go ahead, Bob.
This is what, Mr. Supervisor, this is what we call a no-cost change order. So this is simply just changing the dates. There's no change in contract value.
All right. Okay. He's good, Bob.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So we have a motion is second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
And I have one last thing, and it, this, this is the necessary adoption of a local law. I think it was back in, I think it was 2010, where I think it's Chapter 175 of the town code was adopted to reflect changes in some firm maps that FEMA made back 10 years or, or so. They have done that again. They've changed, I think it's four of the, of the, of the firm maps, and it's necessary for the town to update its current local law to reflect those changes. Those changes have been, we have drafted those changes. Mr. Bash was kind enough to review that. He had approved the said draft language. We have then sent that to the DEC, who also has approved the draft language in the local law. And then now it's simply a, a process that we must follow to adopt the local law. The first step in that direction would be simply to send out lead agency coordination letters to begin the seeker process as part of a local law revision. So I would, I would ask the town board to authorize us to send out those lead agency coordination letters, which will begin the seeker process and, again, continue with the adoption of the local law as that works its way through the process.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yeah.
Mr. Lainin, can you hear me?
Bob, can you hear Al Bax?
I, I, I did not. I'm sorry.
My question for him, Steve, maybe you can convey it, is whether we declare lead agency today or whether we do that after he does his, his coordination letter.
Oh, we, we would, we would do that after. Certainly our intent.
Right.
And that's the purpose of the coordination letters, is to declare the town's intent. And I cannot imagine anybody's going to object. It's just a process we'll have to go through.
Okay, that's fine. So, yeah, he's right. The only motion you will need is to authorize him to move forward with the seeker, seeker letter.
Okay. Can I get a motion to authorize GHD to move forward with the seeker letter?
Make that motion.
We have a motion is second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so moved.
That's all I had, Mr. Supervisor, unless there's any questions.
No, I think you're good. Jeff Ritter?
Good evening. The plant continues with its main panel project. Thank you.
I didn't hear what. I didn't, Jeff, you, we couldn't hear you.
I said the plant is continuing on with its main panel project.
Okay.
I just wanted everybody to know.
Okay. And while, while you're on, while you're up, we can jump kind of to the sewer forgiveness at Joseph Randazzo, which you looked at this letter. Tamara came up with the numbers. I know you said that it is eligible for a one-time sewer relief.
Yeah, that was, was an accident, and we've forgiven that one time for a couple of different people. That's one of those water backup sub pumps valves that broke, and the water just kept running and running and running.
Right.
It doesn't even go to the sewer, so, yeah, that definitely fits with the sewer use agreement.
Okay. So the, the current bill for sewer was $385.69. We did a one-year running average for sewer, and it would, the charge would be $96.30 for sewer onto that bill for, for that bill. So it'd be a, a sewer relief of $289. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion is second. Any questions?
I have a question.
Pardon?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The, we got other people who came up before the board with similar problems, and we said they weren't eligible.
Not with this, I, I don't believe with this particular one, because we've had some, we've had a few that we have said were eligible and we approved. Jeff, you.
You have that pump of the water, the water cost. Okay, this is sewer. Even though this valve had stuck, the homeowner is still going to have to pay for the water.
I suppose. I just remember that young woman who stood in front of us, and she had, they get the neighborhood a $600 bill.
Yeah, that was different.
Yeah, that, that was water. That wasn't sewer.
Yeah, that was different. That was strictly water.
All right, well, may I ask our attorney, Al, is this, you agree with this?
I think what we have to do is, I gotta pull out our policy again. I know we have a policy, strict policy for, for filling the pools. I know that also, again, after my time on the board too, that if there were a simple water leak, that we would not provide any, any, any remuneration for, for the sewer. But this is a mechanical device in, in the home. I just want to make sure, Jeff, that, that maybe we memorialize this alongside with our one-time pool refilling for repairs of liners, et cetera, just so that it's clear to everybody when we're looking at these issues that we have the, the documentation in front of us.
Yes, there's, there's precedent for this. This has happened to, it actually happened to one homeowner a couple of different times. And we forgives the first time, and we didn't the second. So this, this had happened and talked about on the previous board.
I just suggest we circulate it so that everybody has the same policy in front of them. That's all. We can refresh our recollection when, when it comes to these things. We all have it in front of us. That's all. But I would, I would, I would say, based on Jeff's recollection in mind, that, that it complies with our policy.
Okay.
My concern is, does the, the situation go into our sewer system? In this case, it did not. It went into a drainage ditch. So I, I'm in favor of giving the relief.
It actually went into a pond, a retention pond.
Better yet.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Mike Dashon.
I'm here, Mr. Supervisor. Can I be here?
Yep, yep, I can hear you.
Perfect. I apologize. I thought I had the, the Greenway application on the agenda. If it's not, we can present that now or?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's on the agenda under Councilman Givens. We can do it now.
Just before, before we start, just want to just tell everybody that we are starting baseball softball registration this week, as well as some other spring programs that we generally start up. That's it. We took some time this past week to, to go through and try to design and build some, an ice fourth section at Kiwanis Park this week. Right now, we're not really, we're not happy how they, how they turned out, but we're hoping to bring some to the kids for the winter. We're hoping to have that up and running. At some point this week, we get a little bit more snow, but less ice.
It's a good effort to have some outdoor activities in the winter, but Mother Nature's got to cooperate with us, just the right type of snow. And please also comment about some of the items that you're putting on websites. Did you hear me, Mike?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we're, basically, we're just trying to keep up with, giving the kids indoor activities to do during the winter, as far as arts and crafts, as well as, again, baseball's our base program. I've been trying to post indoor drills that get the kids ready to play for this year. Many of the kids who listened lost out on baseball and softball last year. Didn't have anywhere to play. So getting them back into thinking about baseball is going to be a, a goal of ours. What we're, you're going to see in the next few weeks, a little bit of an announcement and a little bit of information from the, in the South regarding what, what baseball and softball's going to look like during the age of COVID. Make sure that everybody knows that we're taking all the safety precautions. Again, just getting them excited for one of our town programs that's been running for 25 years or so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will you lead us through the renovation apparatus that we're going to go through, set up at Pletcher Road and care funds for Greenway?
Sure. We've talked about this in numerous town board meetings in the past. One of the things that we prioritized last year, again, before COVID hit, was the replacement of all our 1997, 1998 units. Pletcher Park is a 98 unit. We've done numerous repairs to it. The repairs became more and more expensive. Purchasing equipment for those types of repairs are, are getting harder to come by. Typical playgrounds have a shelf life, I think, where from, you know, 18 to 25 years. So it's right in the, the middle of when we should be replacing this one. The other thing I was going to mention too is the maintenance aspect of that particular playground at Pletcher Road. To summarize, we kind of sent the supervisor a bunch of pictures of just how long, the, once the weed base takes over, because it's wood chips now, it's, it's a maintenance task. We're looking at eight to 10 man hours pretty much every other week in the middle of summer, just to make it look presentable for our residents. So part of the things that we, that's in that plan there, if you guys had a chance to take a look at, is going to rubberize surface. Besides safety, I mean, you're looking at zero maintenance on it. Our guide would be the, the playground that I designed at Kiwanis Park, and some of the successes and some of the failures that we had there. Obviously, that, that, that rubberized surface, it's called a corded place surface. It's a little bit more expensive, but you get your monies back in maintenance. It's been, say, 2011, so nine years since we've had one at Kiwanis. We've never had a tear. We've never had a repair to that rubber surface. It doesn't, it's sturdy. It's not going anywhere. So that's something I thought was important to put into the new design. Besides that, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to take a look at it. We, we also did age separation on this unit too, where you have an older group, five to 12 on one side. That's going to be a very challenging, very fun unit for that, that age group. And you also have a three to five-year-old, the smaller age group, again, same as Kiwanis, in the same area, you know, connected to it. This project in particular, just, just so we know here, the design that you're looking at, this is going to be. at, this is going to be probably one of the nicest, one of the best playground, playground units for that size in the area. We've put all the bells and whistles on it, we've put chain on it, we've put 14-foot drops instead of eight-foot drops. You've got a ton of slide space, you have a ton of play space. You've got freestanding climbing walls, you have, on, on the park side of the two, you don't have any swinging apparatuses or twisting or turning. We learned our lesson when it came to Quanis Park with that, where we put in a lot of different pieces on, on the, on the unit itself that looked like a great idea at the time, but there are maintenance problems that, that we've had chain snaps, we've had, you know, they call knuckles, the swing knuckles, those, those have broken and they're expensive to replace. So what I try to do with this design is make sure that we don't have the maintenance issues that we think we've, you know, we've, we've had in the past. That doesn't mean there's going to be no maintenance, free of maintenance on that, but I, I think we were, we're learning our lessons pretty well from Quanis Park. If anybody had a chance to take a look at that Greenway application, wanted any questions on the agenda?
Okay. And just to put it on the record, the total project amount is $550,000 and it'll go to Greenway at the next Greenway meeting. So we have a resolution here. I would ask for a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll move.
Second?
We have a second, motion in a second. Any questions in regards to this for Mike or?
No questions, just going to be an outstanding piece of renovation apparatus, it'll be a fantastic unit and I'm sure our grandchildren and children will look forward to using it.
Mike, who does the, who does the installation at some point? Is there a company that sells it to it or?
Yes, each, each private, there's, there's a couple of different private companies that, that do the units this size. They each contract out with their own installation people. I'm not 100% sure what the, what the company's name is that is on that particular one, but there's five or six different companies. They contract as a subcontractor, write with Game Time or Park Text or any of those.
Okay. And John, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I would like to say that we built our house in 95 and my grandson's got to be, the older one, we was four years old, so that would be 14 years ago. We spent four years straight, every summer down there at the park. And the park was really, really, it was used by a lot of people. We met other parents, other grandparents from the community. Between the baseball program in the summer, that was world-class probably, and the park was beautiful and that's, and it's not beautiful now and it's basically because the thing has worn out. And I think it's going to be a great, great addition to, to the community. I applaud you guys for doing the research and getting this going.
Okay.
Just, 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 I'm glad that Mr. Jacoby said that, you know, he built this house in 95. One of the things that, that we did, and what we're going to present to Greenway too is show them a couple of over interest from that year up, in 95, 98, built our first playground. And then show them the population growth in the area, River Walk, Wolf Run, lots of new houses in the area, lots of new population, lots of people coming through that park. It's, this project is going to keep up with the population that we have now.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second, I believe, right? We talked a little bit there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. Melinda Olick, are you on there?
I am here.
Okay.
Okay, just a couple of things. I wanted to say that tomorrow at about 12:30, Becky Wyatt, the chairperson for the Knights County Legislature, will be at the center to talk about the COVID pandemic and how to access the COVID-19 vaccine. She is not coming, nor is the Health Department, to administer the vaccine. I just want people to be aware of that. It's just informational and seating is limited. I prefer to not have to turn anybody away. We're going to try to accommodate as many people as come as possible while adhering to the COVID restrictions that we have in place. So I just want to put that out there. There's not really a lot of good information for seniors on how to access the vaccine and they're frustrated. So, you know, I appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll have some information that we can share with them. Whatever we find out, we will post on the Town of Lewiston website under the senior center, once we have that. The second thing I want to mention is that AARP that does the taxes will be hopefully doing that. We are taking people's name and phone numbers and when AARP is officially allowed to start scheduling that, we will be calling people. So they don't have to call. We, we're on it. The coordinator for this area was in today and we talked about it and they're ready to, to move forward as soon as they're given permission from AARP. So we're thinking of doing two days, Monday and Friday, because there's so many people that are interested in that service. And the third thing I want to mention is that the contractor who is replacing the doors and windows, he has the doors at a shop, he's painting them and we're moving forward with that.
Excellent, excellent. Does anybody have any questions for Melinda? Anything more? Go ahead.
Melinda, will you, will you have to close this center for a short period of time when they're doing the installation of the doors?
I don't think so. I think we're gonna try to, you know, he and I talked about it, maybe have them work in the afternoon, because lots of, if people are coming, it's usually a small number in the afternoon and we'll maybe do it on a Friday or, yeah, they're going to work with us so we can stay open.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Melinda.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Maggert, I want to reach out too, because I don't know, did you talk to John Jacoby today?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you did. I promise we'll take care of you in two weeks.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you that we have called off the meeting for this month.
Okay.
We really don't have a place to-
Right.
-be separated.
Yeah. Mrs. Maggert's just advising us that she called off the meeting for the month of February. So, okay, thank you. Moving on to finance. Jackie Ignell?
Tonight, I'm asking for your approval to process eight 2020 budget revisions that have previously been submitted to the board.
Bill, can you hear, can you hear Jackie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I can. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget revisions, items one through eight as presented. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
My question for the 2020 budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Jackie when I came in on this. We, when I was on the board my last term, we used to read every one of these. Now we post them, because I was a little wondering why we don't read them anymore and there's so many numbers that really nobody would comprehend. So they are posted on our website, so if anybody wants to look and see with the meeting minutes, we're on there.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That is.
Okay. Nothing under old business, new, new business correspondence?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. Legal?
There are two items that I'd like to bring to your attention. One is a motion that had been made at your last board meeting to modify the residency requirement. After the meeting, I gave it some thought and frankly, if I could just read the motion, the guide and move to revise the residency requirement as per the Town of Lewiston handbook to include the town and/or a budding adjoining municipalities, i.e. Porter, Wilson, Cambria, Wheatfield, Niagara, and City of Niagara Falls, Secretary Glen Moriell, and Cary Fiveall. I'm going to recommend tonight that you rescind that motion. In my opinion, it's a little sloppy. What we have here is we've rescinded, or we've, we've made a motion to amend the handbook without any significant or specific language to point to. My concern is that if we have a hiring situation that comes up between now and the time we have final language for the handbook, that it may be interpreted in two ways. So what I'm asking the board is number one, rescind that last motion. Let's set a deadline for when you'd like to see revised handbook language in front of you, and then you can adopt that same language at, at a future board meeting. So I will defer to the town board as to when you'd like it. I would suggest maybe a month or two, but if you want more time to kind of kick it around amongst yourselves, I certainly could provide something to you relatively shortly and you can put on the, the agenda as, as you'd like. So two motions, one to rescind the prior motion and then some discussion as to how you want to proceed.
And just, just so everybody knows, the intention of the board is to continue with, with what we made a motion for the last time. He just wants to have, you know, in writing for us, so this isn't a change in what, what we want to do. So I guess what we'll do is I'll ask for a motion to rescind our previous resolution in regards to the residency requirement.
I'll make that motion rescind.
I have a question.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second. Go ahead, Bill.
All right, Al, I thought when I made the motion, I referred to this specific section in the handbook.
You may have, I'm reading, I'm reading from the- I'm reading from the minutes, Bill. And so you, you may have made that reference. However, we don't have specific language that we're adopting. We have the motion by you to modify it, but not necessarily the specific language which would be entered into the handbook for other people in the future to read and, and apply.
So what Al wants to do is just rewrite the motion, rewrite it properly, how it'll appear in the handbook, and that's what we're going to approve. So-
But this needs to be taken care of in a timely manner, because there's a couple of employees who have started to look for a change of residence and they're looking, because of the distinct need of the type of property that they want, they have to look outside the town and we don't want them to get caught between a rock and a hard spot and lose a piece of property that they have their eye on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that'll occur. I think the intention of this board is, you know, to allow basically those adjoining municipalities, so I, I don't believe it'll be a problem. So-
I look forward to seeing your wording, Al.
Very good.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then Al and I talked earlier last week and we were just putting a date out there. We're talking about making this change for like April 15th or May 1st, we, we talked about.
That'd be fine with me. I mean, I, I certainly could get to something in the meantime. You could, we could circulate it and then have any comments or, or issues raised, possibly circulate it to each of the department houses to see if they have any concerns with it.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I mean, even if I just point out, I'm just certain, we were concerned about the, the timeliness on getting to work, that's one issue.
Right.
But the, the proximity to the, the Town of Lewiston is different if we're talking about the Highway Department versus, let's say, the Police Department or the sewer, sewer plant, I mean, or the Town Hall for that matter. So that being said, different departments might have different needs also.
Okay. So let's say May 1st?
May 1st would be fine. I'll make sure I get you out something-
And it can be sooner, yeah, and it can be sooner if we come up with something.
A few weeks, absolutely.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion on that or?
I don't believe so. You've given me my instruction, I'll take care of it.
Okay.
And then the last thing that we had on the agenda, Mr. Supervisor-
You didn't, you didn't rescind the motion.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we did. We just voted. We all voted, we all voted to rescind it.
All right, okay.
The next, the, the next item is, is really on your agenda, Mr. Supervisor, which is the resolution for participating in the, the Lake Ontario Preparedness Group.
And what that is, is there was a group that got together along the shores of Lake Ontario for all the flooding that, that the area had, and they wanted to incorporate that same group and talk about the potential for municipalities who share over 36 miles of New York State Niagara River and Lake Ontario shorelines and try and cooperate amongst themselves, shared services type things to complete that path, taking the path further than where it's heading now around the Youngstown area and continuing it all the way out towards New Fane and tying in with the, the Greenway all across the state. So basically, it's a resolution to participate, for the supervisor to participate in the Lake Ontario Preparedness Group. I can read it real quick, because I don't think everybody has the resolution. It's a purpose to authorize the supervisor to participate in a work group with towns and villages of the Lake Ontario Preparedness Group in an effort to collaborate on local waterfront revitalization initiatives and trails, whereas the Lake Ontario Preparedness Group is made up of the neighboring municipalities who share over 36 miles of New York's Niagara River and Lake Ontario shorelines and various environmental, historical, and preservation groups, and whereas the Niagara River and Lake Ontario shorelines are significant regional assets identified in each community's local waterfront revitalization plan, and whereas each member community contains significant multi-use trails which combine to form essential pedestrian and multi-use connections of the shoreline and Empire State Trail Networks, and whereas said member communities acknowledge the regional significance of the confluences of these greenways and wish to collaborate to maximize the impact of taxpayer investments in these joint community assets, now therefore be it resolved, supervisor of the Town of Lewiston is hereby authorized to formally participate with the Village of Lewiston, Village of Youngstown, Town of Porter, Village of Wilson, Town of Wilson, Town of New Fane, Village of Barker, and the Town of Somerset in the work group identified as the Lake Ontario Preparedness Group and to work to fulfill its stated vision.
I'll move it, Brad.
So we have a motion?
Second?
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And do we need a, a motion to allow me to sign because there's a-
I don't believe you do, Mr. Supervisor. There was a, there was a proposed document that, that was kind of like a sponsoring member. I think that the board's authorization in allowing you to participate in that, that was really a memorandum and it has no binding nature to it. It doesn't bind the town to anything other than the fact that you'll participate at your, at your will.
Okay. Okay. Now, Councilman Guyven, we already took care of your agenda item. Councilman Jacoby, the site plan review at 4647 Lower River Road has been tabled at this time. It'll be addressed in two weeks, correct, John?
Yes, and I spoke with a couple of the, and yourself about that project. It's a very interesting project and I hope we can move forward on it in two weeks.
Okay. Having said that, we have the privilege of the floor or public concerns. I'll first look around, we have one visitor. Sir, would you like to, privilege of the floor, would you like to say anything? No? Okay. And I don't believe there's anybody else online in the Zoom meeting that wishes to speak. Announcement, town offices will be closed on Monday, Monday, February 15th in observance of President's Day. Also, myself and Councilman Guyven will be participating virtually in the Association of Towns Annual Conference on the 15th and the 16th. In our upcoming meetings, the historic preservation for February 9th has been canceled. Environmental Commission meeting for February 9th has been canceled. Zoning Board of Appeals is February 11th at 6:30 PM. Planning Board is February 18th at 6:30 PM. And the regular town board meeting is February 22nd at 6:00 PM. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Supervisor-
Yes, go ahead.
Can you introduce Carl Day? Is he still there?
Yeah, Carl, 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 right? Carl's in the back. Carl, just come on out here for a second. We won't, you don't have to get too close to anybody. Carl Day is our, our student from Niagara County Community College, who's helping us with the Zoom and the Facebook Live and hopefully we'll get it so all the bugs are removed by the end of the semester anyways. So welcome aboard. So I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion? Second?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.